Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item on the agenda is student reports. We have some student reports. If you'd come to the mic, please.
Hello and good evening. My name is Alicia Fagarsky and I am a sophomore at Proudie. On January fifteenth and sixteenth, final exams were held. Periods one and two were on the fifteenth and three and four were held on the sixteenth. These days were a half day for students. On the seventeenth, Proudie held its snowball semi-formal. Um, the dance was a big success. Thank you to the student council for sponsoring the dance and their advisors, Mrs. McLaughlin and Mrs. Bucier. Today, we kicked off quarter three of the year and our new rotating schedule was put into place. Tomorrow, January twenty-first, the eighth grade parent open house will be held from six to eight P.M. All current eighth graders are encouraged to attend. And finally, on Tuesday, January sixth, Anna Bogdan was the recipient of the Superintendent's Award and was recognized at the Worcester County Superintendent Association Annual Scholars Luncheon, and this was held at Holy Cross College. Congratulations to Anna. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Breonna Canavan. On Saturday, January seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, National Junior Honor Society members, Kaitlyn Homberg and Cameron Dubey, along with their advisor, Ms. Parliament, participated in the fifth annual Project Three Fifty-One Leadership and Service Day. They first attended a Unite Act lead meeting at the Fanuel Hall. After that, they and the other ambassadors were deployed to the six service sites in Boston area. Cameron helped sort children's clothing at Cradles to Crayons. Through his and his team work's work, they were able to service over seven hundred fifty children in need throughout Massachusetts. Kaitlyn went to Brighton High School where she worked at four different stations. First, Kaitlyn designed and filled health kits for those in need. She next made scarves for homeless veterans. Next, she made a design, a mural, for one of the walls in the school, and finally, she helped make a video for families of fallen soldiers. After their service work, Cameron and Kaitlyn traveled to the State House where they participated in a town meeting with Governor Charlie Baker. The special guest was Patriots owner Bob Kraft. The day ended with a family-style dinner held in the hall of the State House with all of the Project Three Fifty-One ambassadors and their bus captains and chaperones. Kaitlyn and Cameron were able to donate over fifty bucks for their unity project. Knox Trail has participated in this statewide service program for five years. Map testing will begin tomorrow and there will be a Valentine's Day dance on February seventh. Thank you.
Thank you to both of our students. Next item, hearing for visitors. Any visitors wish to be heard? Yes.
Hi, John Stevens, Three Thompson Pond Road Board of Selectmen also. I was gonna make some phone calls on this question, but I thought this would be a good opportunity to raise it for everyone. Just looking at our communities, I think you'd all agree that we have, we are rich with economic, historical, and recreational assets. It frequently comes up as we talk about ways to promote our communities and, you know, sort of the resources we are not fully taking advantage of. That could translate into some, put this down a bit here, that's better, that could translate into some, into some great volunteer projects that could benefit the towns and community groups by stretching resources, but also, you know, make possible some really valuable educational experiences for kids, you know, taking them out of the classroom and finding some real-world projects. So my question for you is really one of procedure. If someone in the town, whether it's Spencer East Brookfield, you know, departments or community groups, have an idea for some, a joint project, a need they have, and, you know, you could identify, make it, you know, keep it focused, obviously, not, you know, keep it, you know, manageable, how would you like to be made aware of that? I mean, you know, should that come through the superintendent's office or at the principal level? How would you like to deal with that?
I would suggest that you would send a proposal to the superintendent's office and review it.
Okay. Okay. And, you know, just as an aside, considering our recent history, I can't help but think that this, you know, some, you know, some positive, you know, cooperative activities between the town and the district would, I think, would give us the kind of headlines we'd all like to see rather than some that we've, you know, we've seen in past years. So that's, and whether it comes from, I suppose it's up to the organization, you know, who makes the call, but in the, say, in case of the town, maybe it should come through Adam or department head. Does that, you know, we do our best to coordinate things. I'm thinking of a couple of things involving, you know, history, recreation, there are some issues with our rail trail, which we recently got a grant for, we could, you know, use some, you know, some graphics assistance on signs, things like that, so, but in whoever makes the contact, it should be, start with the superintendent's office.
I think probably from your side, it ought to go to Adam, and from Adam, the superintendent.
Great. I'll, you know, let the board know, and I say, community groups, you know, anyone listening from the community, should be made aware of this opportunity as well. Okay? Great. Thank you. Thanks for the direction.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? TNI will move on. Next thing in your packet is approval of the minutes of the January sixth, two thousand and fifteen meeting. Any additions or corrections? Otherwise, the chair would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Cludia, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Messia. Prayer of discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed or voted. Next is to approve and retain the minutes of executive session of November eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Any changes or additions? If not, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Cludia, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ethia. Ms. Messy, I'm sorry. Any prayer of discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed or voted. Next, approve and retain the minutes of executive session of December sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Any addition or deletions? Otherwise, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Cludia, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Messia. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed or voted. And lastly, approve and retain the minutes of executive session of January sixth, two thousand and fifteen. Any addition or deletions? If not, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Cludia, seconded.
Second.
By Ms. Messia. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed or voted. Next item, financial report. We have the auditor with us here tonight, Mr. Scanlon. All members have received in their packet on Friday a management letter from Mr. Scanlon as well as the audit report. He's here tonight to go through the report and answer any questions that the board may have. So I'll turn it on to you, Mr. Scanlon.
How's everyone doing tonight? Have to apologize, I just got my voice back from being sick all weekend, so, if it goes in and out, apologize. Should've got three reports you got on Friday. I'm gonna walk through all three of them, give a good attempt on how to read a government's financial statements. I know they can be pretty complex, not comparable to corporate financial statements where you have a P and L and a balance sheet, pretty easy to read. So I'll go through the financials first, it's the thicker one. If you turn to pages three and four, that is the independent auditor's report. That is kind of the bread and butter of what an audit is. Our sole objective is to opine on your financial statements, to ensure that they are free of material misstatement. And we have, and we issued a clean opinion, which basically, in kind of layman's terms, is your financial statements properly reflected for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, your financial transactions, which is good. And then if you turn to your financial statements, which begin on pages fourteen, these where things can get a little more complicated, on pages fourteen and fifteen, these two financial statements, actually, within a government, you actually have three sets of financial statements, which I know is sometimes hard to grasp. But these are the first two, they're called entity-wide statements, and it, the method of accounting is full accrual. It uses an economic resource measurement focus, which is kind of a fancy term for just full accrual, looking at the whole long-term picture. As you see here, you see fixed assets on here, where you're not budgeting depreciation expense within your operating budget, so it's a different way of looking at your financials. Kind of the key things to pull out of this is if you go down for net position, you see unrestricted, it's got negative seventeen million. You don't want your financial position ever to be in a negative, so that is bad, however, with an asterisk, the driving force behind that is OPEB, which if you go up under non-current liabilities, you'll see a liability for sixteen point five million. What OPEB is, is Other Post-Employment Benefits, which I'm sure, or I hope you've heard, talked about out there. I know our profession has beaten it down, management's throats for the past five years. Basically, it's health insurance. You promised your retirees that you're gonna pay when they retire. And again, you're in a pay-as-you-go method, you made all these promises, but you're not funding them. I think one of the things to pull out about OPEB is, is as you replace a person when they leave, there's a cost that still stays with that person, and it's health insurance. So as another person comes in, you got their current active health insurance, plus you made a promise that when they retire, you're gonna pay X amount of their health insurance. So I think that's something to take in perspective when you're thinking about future budgets and the impact, and I think that's what OPEB has done. I don't fully expect you to fund seventeen million. I don't think no one really has, but it's something that governments have to start thinking about. And really, that's what you really get off this balance sheet, is kind of the full entity-wide perspective. Any questions? I encourage questions as we go. And at page fifteen, again, that's the P and L.
Excuse me one second. Ms. Nicholas. We talked about, we talked about re-whilement pensions. How about Worcester County retirement? I know that was mentioned at the Selectmen's meeting. How's the district doing with the people who are in Worcester County retirement? Are we up to date or we're behind, or what?
No, you're paying your assessment, that you're assessed every year, which is good. Then at the plan level, which is the Worcester County retirement, I'm not too familiar how percentage they are funded, but you are paying what they're assessing, what they're assessing you.
So in that degree, is any big money then, that we owe to Worcester County X amount of?
Well, I think all pensions by itself is, there's an unfunded liability there, but again, I'm not familiar with what Worcester County's out to. I know some retirement system out to two thousand and thirty-four, being funded two thousand and thirty-two. They're giving you an annual assessment to fund it by then, and you're paying that, so you're meeting your obligation on that regard.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
And on page fifteen, that's the profit and loss statement, that kind of goes with entity-wide balance sheet that we just reviewed. Again, on these expenses here, that incorporates depreciation in there. Again, it's not in your budget, so this gives you just a different perspective on how to look at your overall financial position, and you can see you had a net decrease in your financial position of one point three million. The primary driver of that is OPEB. Again, you're not funding it, so it's something to, well, I know those first two statements can kind of be, if you're not used to reading government's financial statements, I geez, what are these? That's kind of what the objective is, is looking at, geez, we borrowed money, we built a school, where before, in your financial statements, you never saw an asset, or where'd it go? Did it just disappear? Or no? That's why they led you to do an entity-wide statements. The asset goes on, along with the liability. Okay. On pages sixteen and seventeen. On page sixteen, again, you have a balance sheet, which is very similar to the one on thirteen, except it's a different perspective. This is on the modified accrual. This is what most governments' management can relate to, is what DOR will use to certify your E and D. And again, it's labeled the general fund and the non-major funds. The non-major funds are made up of school grants, school revolving. You'll see the ending fund balance is eight hundred and sixteen thousand. The primary balance of that is circuit breaker from the state. It's a form of a grant, that's approximately four hundred and seventy-three thousand. School choice of that number is eighty-eight thousand. And then, because the district had financial issues the year before and issued deficit finance bonds and that special legislation, you had to establish a special reserve under that act, and that balance is represented there, and that's approximately about fifty-eight thousand. Again, a more detail, if you want to see what breaks down the whole eight sixteen, that's on page forty-five out there on the back, but the primary drivers are those three, what we talked about. And if we flip over to the general fund, we look at that, you'll see your unassigned fund balance is four hundred and forty-nine thousand. That is what your E and D was certified at. I will put a big asterisk by that, kind of like people that went to the baseball Hall of Fame with the steroids, we've got a big asterisk there. Primary driver of that is you issue deficit bonds to cover your one point three million dollar deficit coming into the year. And again, that's all under DOR approval and guidelines, and it's proper GAAP reporting to recognize that. However, when we look at it, I'm not too sure borrowing should have your surplus and use it for operations. We allude to that in the management letter. And we kind of go on page seventeen, and that's your P and L of it. You can see, as you come down, your operations, your revenues and expenses, your revenues exceed your expenses by seven hundred and eleven thousand, and then you had a transfer out to cover some deficits out in your special revenue funds. And then we'll see the one point one coming in, and the general fund has a revenue source. Again, it's proper accounting under GAAP, under DOR guidelines. So your general fund increased one point seven million. You had a deficit coming in of one point three, so that's what got you the surplus of four forty-nine. Then if we go over to page twenty, which is the budget versus actual, which the only difference between page twenty and page seventeen with the general fund is, is this is a budget in front of it. We kind of, we'll look at how you budgeted and how you compare to it. You can see on your revenues, your revenues exceed your budgets by approximately two hundred and four thousand. Fifty-five thousand of that is kind of a one-time grants, a clean energy grant. Again, you spent the money in the prior years and you got it in this year, so that's a one-time event, we'd call that. Your Medicaid, you budgeted ninety-five thousand, you took in a hundred and eighty-two, so you're very conservative, and I would encourage that conservatism going forward. So of the E and D of our, or how you generate operations, five ninety-seven is how you increased your operating fund throughout the year. And what that is telling me is from your prior years, obviously, you went in the hole one point three million, you had some issues with financial reporting and budgeting. This is telling me that management has improved their policies, their procedures, which starts with the school committee, gone toeing at the top and pushing its way down, so the plans that you put in place and kind of the leadership you've showed has taken place, and this is a representative of that. But again, you started the year off one point three million, approximately about six hundred thousand, so I say you're still in the hole, seven hundred thousand, and that's the way you should look at it going forward. I will tell you, it's perfectly legal to use the E and D that's certified at four forty-nine, however, I'm not too sure it's too financially prudent to do so. So I think it's one thing, if you take off these financial statements, and we reiterate in the management letter, is even though you have E and D, I think you're in the, still in the hole, seven hundred and thirteen thousand. That's the way you should continue going forward.
What's the theory that they're operating under, that you can borrow money and then count that as a revenue source, as a surplus? Because the average person hearing this is gonna say, this is absolutely crazy.
I asked the same thing when I went through. I think, you know, our first goal round of it, when we're here in August, September, I informed the district you weren't gonna have E and D this year, after sitting down, talking with the state, and talking with certain financial advisors. Their rules and regulations allows you to recognize a funding source because you have those payments built into your budget going forward, so you actually provided for it. From an accountant, from everything that tells me from a financial viewpoint, it's not what I would preach. Again, if you wanted to use E and D for one-time events that you would normally borrow for, I would say that, that would, might be appropriate. I'd be very conservative in doing that, because if you're gonna borrow, say, if you're gonna borrow for two hundred thousand, when you get down to the bottom line, borrowed funds are creating that E and D, so you're really borrowing for those capital items. Does that kind of make remotely sense?
But it just seems to me that it presents a false picture, and I think it's, it's gonna become an Achilles' heel to us as we go forward, needing more money from the community or working with the towns, because it makes it appear as though we have this pool of money to utilize on, to regular operational expenses when we really shouldn't be.
Correct, and that's why I want to reiterate tonight, that's one thing you take, anyone takes away from tonight's meeting is, you have E and D, but you don't. You know, I hate to use the word, it's a falsehood, it's falsity, it's just the way guidelines allows you to recognize it, you actually borrowed money to get it, so, yeah.
Right, at the end of the day, Mr. Chairman, I really think the way it needs to be presented is that although this might be the approved method that DOR is allowing this to be presented, we have to look at it as, we're seven hundred thousand dollars in the hole, and that's the way we need to look at it. Until we pay that note down in total. I mean, I certainly wouldn't even consider touching E and D. I wouldn't consider, you know, and there may be cries to utilize it, to throw it towards assessments and whatnot. It's not there, it's a fictitious number.
Yeah, I would not use it for operating, an assessment would be for operating, because you're just gonna, if you use it for assessments, you're just gonna get it back because, because you're gonna be doing it through an assessment of the debt.
Okay.
So yeah, I mean, that, I know financial statements, you know, they, when you look at them, that's why in the government, you look at it, you're saying, whoa, we have four hundred and forty-nine thousand, where you really don't, so that one-time recognition of revenue from a deficit bond, and I think one of the reasons why it's being recognized is because you've provided for it by borrowing long-term and have a debt schedule out, so that allows you to recognize it. Just for instance, if you built a school and you borrow long-term debt, you'd recognize that debt into the project to fund it, even though you're paying it back over twenty years. So that's what they call a deficit bond.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Nicholas.
I just want to say the same, that the chairman said, Mr. Cludia, that would be a false impression. I mean, we're, we're seven hundred thousand in the hole, no matter how you look at it. I mean, numbers, put numbers down, but at the end of the day, we're in the hole.
Yes.
So I just want to make that as Mr. Cludia and Mr. Hayes says, no false economies out here.
Oh, no, I mean, yes, you're in the hole, seven hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And again, keep on doing what you're doing, you can see you turned back six hundred thousand, or is that?
Well, bankruptcy.
One point three, so your policies, the procedures that you put in place are working.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask you one question, Mr. Chairman. On page seventeen, it says, it says, non-major government funds. What is that? Is that, what's non-major government funds?
Ah, that's your school choice, your school grants, that's what, that's broken out in page.
Twenty, no, seventeen, I'm sorry.
You can go on page forty-five, and that's what breaks it out.
Okay, okay, okay.
So if you go on page forty-five, you'll see the breakdown of what non-major funds represent, basically grants and revolving funds. The major fund balance is circuit breaker. And again, when we look at, we look at a school district, again, your reserves should be somewhere between three to five percent, and reserves, what we mean is E and D, now throw school choice into that, some districts will utilize their school choice fund as a reserve. So between the two, you should be striving for three to five percent, and you're not even in that vicinity, you're somewhere around one, one point two. State allows you to have E and D up to five percent of your operating budget, again, but a good mix of school choice and E and D of around five percent, I would encourage the district to work for. So it's kind of the highlights of the financial, and I don't know if there's any specific questions, I kind of went through, I can get into a lot more detail if they want it.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief comment.
Yeah.
Given the fact that, just for the general public, you know, that we borrowed and we were in a significant deficit position, and we borrowed against that, and a long-term note, and the fact is, to have the statement that we have in front of us tonight does say an awful lot for the district, the management of the district, the leadership of the district in one year, to be able to bounce back. We haven't come all the way back, but certainly a good chunk of it, we've come back from, so.
Yeah, you went from one point three, six hundred, I mean, pretty close to cutting it in half.
Right. It's, it's, it's been a good job by all, and it certainly has not been without sacrifice to the district, we do know that. Unfortunately, you know, sooner or later, you gotta pay the piper for previous bills, and that's kind of what we had to do, so.
Right.
Correct. And again, you're not out of the hole yet.
No, we're not, but we're on the right track.
We're on the right track, but, you know, again, I don't want to beat something to death, but, you know, one thing you take away, you do have E and D of four forty-nine, but you really don't.
Right.
I can't stress that enough, and no one paid me to say that either. Your second report should be the single audit, it's a little thinner report, I just want to touch base on that. I don't want to get too technical into it, I just want to let you know what it is. The district expends over a half a million dollars in federal funds, which kicks into a whole different type of audit, it's called a single audit, and in there, it says, we have to test at least fifty percent of your federal awards. Again, the district receives about one point, just under one point four million in federal awards. Two programs that we tested was Title I and the SPECT cluster, and we had no findings with compliance requirements with regards to how those two programs are managed, so I think that's kind of key. Now, I don't know, sometimes that report kind of confuses people, because it's like seven, eight pages, it seems like wording and confusing wording and everything else, but the general gist is you had no major findings on your federal awards. Kind of the last report is the management letter, that often time is the focal point of management. Again, a management letter is letters of criticism. As we go through our testing, we kind of put our findings into three buckets, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, and other matters. As in last year, you did have a material weakness, and we kind of, with management of the district and its setting of the budget and operating of it, that has gone away, those have been taken out. And now we're just down to other matters, and I kind of go one by one over them. Briefly, financial condition of the district, I think I beat that down pretty good, I think we got the point on that. Number two, student activity funds. It's always been in the law that the student activity funds have to be audited every year, and two of the three can be audited by someone internally. Again, we've always taken the approach, we always incorporate the student activities within the whole gist of the audit, and don't do a separate agreed-upon procedures report. DESI has kind of clarified things this year going forward with compliance requirements is, they're gonna start enforcing that student activities be audited every year, so, again, once every three years, has to be someone from an outside source, but it can be done internally. Again, DESI will be contacting your business manager probably pretty quick, and probably this spring, they're gonna want them audited whether internally or externally, so just be prepared. Again, we can help you get through that. We used to take the approach of include it in the total all audit with the school district, why pay separate for it? I guess there's been some issues around other communities going forward, so I think they're gonna enforce it. And they put guidelines out there on it, so I would encourage superintendent, school, business manager to attend the meetings on that, what they talk about. Number three and number five, kind of go hand in hand. Again, we'd encourage the district to really review their cash receipts collection process, again, from time of collection, make a set of policies, again, if you're out, an athletic event, you're collecting cash at the door, again, safeguarding those receipts all the way to time they're turned over to the district treasurer, whether they're waiting deposit, they're properly safeguarded, there's properly documentation of cash and checks, those sort of issues. Again, I'd review our policies. This has been in all of our municipal clients, for the most part, say, good eighty percent of them. Again, these type of financial transactions we're talking about are not material to financial statements, but I think they're more politically sensitive, and again, it's good to have your internal control safeguard of your collection of receipts. And then number four, again, we would encourage the district, once, I mean, it's tough to develop multi-year capital and operating budgets when you don't have any reserves, but again, I think going forward, within your budgets, to start establishing a five-year capital and operating budget, I think would help the district going forward. I know. I know, I know there's a lot of capital needs to be had around the district, again, you can put a wish list together and not have the funding for it, but at least you have it there, when someday you do have reserves. I think that, I think that's one of the ones that I would encourage going forward. And then, number six, just more accounting standards, board, good stuff, Gadsby 68, reason why we're kind of putting in a management report is more informational purposes, is for your financial statements to be out on time next year, which the state is going to want them, I think same sort of timeframe, as long as you have that deficit bond overhead. The retirement system, Worcester County Retirement has to provide you information, according to Gadsby 68, so I would encourage getting that information early, and make sure you're gonna get it in the summer months, and in time to put into your financial statements in August and September. So, that's why we're kind of informing you now, to get the ball rolling. And that's kind of, that's my spiel.
In your management letter, you pointed to the fact that you've spoken to district employees on ideas of strengthening internal controls and operating efficiency.
Yep.
Would you just share with the board what those were, or which suggestions you have made, or...
Again, the cash collections, timely deposits, having the money, not awaiting, you know, if a football game happens on a Saturday, you get the money turned over on a Monday, game reports, you know, typically, pre-ticket sales, you know, ticket number one to ticket number 10, you know, $10 a ticket, that should be 10 tickets, $100 equals a game report, those sort of things.
Did you find any existence of receipt, of receipts, numbered receipts being given for cash collected?
Uh, what we did is, we went in, we established some analytical procedures for this year, and we're really gonna focus on them in next year, so we're gonna do a comparative analytically. That'd be a no, yeah, that's a political no, yes. We didn't really get into the detail of it.
Anyone else have any questions? Chairman. Mr. Nagus?
I just have a couple of questions, on the bonding with BAA III, would you, would you tell, would you tell us, I think I know what it is, but would you tell the public what the bonding means?
Your, your bond rating?
Yeah.
Um, when you go out to borrow money in the market, they rate you, and it has a significant impact on your interest rate, so B, your, your bond rating is not the best in the world.
No, and what's the next step after BAA III?
You know, I didn't know it was gonna be a quiz tonight, I know, I know they just rearranged them, in the past year, I don't know what they are, but you, you go A, double A, triple A's, triple A is the highest you can get.
So, in other words, when you go to borrow, you're gonna pay more for your borrower because you're not a good creditor?
I'm gonna say yes to that, I think I understand, yeah, I'm gonna say yes to that, I think I understand what you said.
Okay, and my second question to you is, there's been a lot of stories about fiscal audit, would you please go into, into short summary, I saw you on the selectmen's meeting talk about that, but there's been a lot of questions in the school here about fiscal audit, would you please explain to it in a...
I think you mean forensic.
Oh, forensic audit?
Yeah, I'm sorry, forensic audit.
Probably the most misused term in auditing, I'm still trying to find the standards for a forensic audit, there's only one set of audit standards, that's statement auditing standards, that the audit, this are financial audits in accordance with. I think a forensic audit is when you go back and redo everything to recalculate.
And what would be the purpose of doing that?
Ah, fraud.
Fraud.
If you think there's fraud, but again, I usually tell people if there's frauds going on, usually the pie records don't exist anyways.
No, because that's been brought up, and, and people keep saying this and saying this, and it's expensive for one thing, and if there's, if there's no big fraud...
Forensic audit has its place, but usually associated with fraud, like, you're, you know there's money missing, again, I have to, there's various aspects for it.
But just to have one to make it sound like you, we passed, it's, it's ludicrous, correct?
Correct. I would say that would be not financially prudent.
Or if you probably couldn't afford it anyways.
Yeah, you know, it's a misused term out there, I mean, I've, a lot of my clients are saying, she's, I want a forensic audit, I'm like, I'm not too sure if you have any categories that would probably fit the forensic audit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You also did an additional report that just went to the superintendent on the, on the end of the year pupil and financial report.
Yeah, they agree, yeah.
On that particular report, and I don't need to go into it, because I think all the members haven't had access to it, but had, did you verify that amendments have been filed on all of the issues that were cited?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, that, in your report, Department of Secretary of Education puts a compliance supplement that says, they require, Indy report requires to be filed with DESI every year, and then they say they want certain transactions looked at on it, and make sure they're reported correctly, and there's some, when they put the compliance supplement out, they know there's gonna be corrections in it, because the number, some of the numbers are pre-populated, and they already know they're incorrect, so, when you look at that report, there could be seven findings, but six of them you couldn't avoid, because...
So, it's customary to have those type of amendments?
Yes, yeah, you're nothing out of the ordinary in that report, and we usually just do two bound copies, that one to the superintendent, one to DESI, because it's really a DESI-use report.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Nagus? No? Well, thank you very much for coming, and thank you for your...
Problem, anytime, if any questions throughout the year happens, I don't want to say to call the office.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, unfinished business, revolving student accounts, everyone had something left at their table from the treasurer? Susan, is this something that you wanted to just give a brief explanation? Okay, but, yeah, why don't you go to the mic and just give us a brief explanation as to what you put together?
Mr. Chairman, just a, a question.
Yes.
Is this different than what was in our packet, or is this the same thing, just a copy?
I'm not sure what you received in your packet, I did, I, there was some confusion between Martha and myself, so I redid it today to make sure, the one I left on the table tonight is what I wanted you to have.
Okay, so all members should be looking at the one that was left at the table tonight, not the one that was in your packet? Everybody got it? One sec.
So, basically, Mr. Norquist requested, he wanted the revolving account balances, so as you can see, Julie provided those for me on the 20th of December, this preschool balance, after-school and before-school programs, the parking permits, revolving athletic and revolving building. As far as the student activity accounts, he requested the balances of those, which you can see, they're, the savings and the checking, so listed. He also asked me about the parent groups, if you all remember, we have no control over the parent groups, we had to turn over those funds, they were issued, the checks were issued to pals and to, and to Paws in October of 2013.
Do they have their own tax ID number now, and...
I, I can, I have no autonomy over any of that, they're totally, I gave them the parent groups that money, and I can't question.
Let me rephrase the question, are they still using our tax identification number?
No, they're not supposed to be.
All right.
I have gotten no reporting on our tax ID for any of them.
Okay.
And district balances, that was 1130, 2014, those were the account balances for cash, that's the last time that they were reconciled, I reconcile at the end of the month, but I don't receive the bank statements till the 19th of the following month, so this week I will reconcile for December, so that was November's balances. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from anybody? Mr. Nagus?
I want to say thanks for doing this, Susan, because I requested it, and, and signed your name to it, so, but I just have a question, because I used to go up to Lake Street School quite a bit, and I don't know if you can answer that, or, or the principal, but there's a Megan Fund Fair, $82.35, this was mine, and it's the one that first came on the board here, that, that was a grant for somebody who was in the system or moved on, and you're supposed to spend the interest only, and just leave the general fund alone, and there was a place out in the back, as you go around the back of the school, there was, there was a section, there were some plants or whatever, and that's been lacking in the last year or so, so, I don't think it's your problem, I think it's, it's the principal. Is, is this being, taken care of for what the, what the person requested the money for?
That Megan Fair Fund, if I remember correctly, was from a Wyre Village student, and that there were, I think we used most of that money to buy books in her memory, but I would, I would have to look into it and look at the detail at what, what is left in that balance, Julie didn't provide that, I don't know if I have it right here.
I might be wrong, Susan, but this was at Lake Street School, in the back, there's a piece of, like a bark mulch and some plants, and that was supposed to be, it was a request from somebody in upper memory, somebody to, to be maintained, and I don't see that being done over there.
That, that account has an balance of $82 in it.
If, if that's the same account.
Yeah, I see that, and I guess, my memory was it was a Wyre Village student, but I understand what you're saying, you would like it to be cared for, I don't know if that would fall into the, you know, the grounds at the individual schools, because we as well have one at Wyre Village, and we also have one at the high school.
No, what my point is, is, is I understand what you're saying, but if, if that was the reason for it, and there was money left, I think we ought to do something.
And again, I can look into it for you, but I, my memory of Megan Fair was that they wanted it to go to help a student or to go for books, but I can check that out.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
I, I would just ask, I think that the board should ask the superintendent to contact those, the two parents groups, and just request, what do they have, a tax ID number, just to ensure that they're not using our number at this point, because that was a problem in, in the past.
They were all with expensive segues, I don't know if they're still there, but the people with expensive segues would have heard.
Well, I'd like to know for sure, so Dr. Crowe, could you, would the treasurer take care of that and check it out to be sure? Okay, moving on, next item, 2015, 2016 Program of Studies, you've had that copy, Mr. Bayshant, we're gonna give this, put this to rest tonight?
Well, I hope so, I hope so, the handbook, we still have to wait for the changes from the CPR audit, there are some minor language changes that'll go into this, basically what I'm looking for is a vote to accept the changes that we made, that we reviewed, with the exception of those that are gonna require super, school committee funding, school committee approval through the funding process, through the budget process. The main reason for this is, in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna be ready to send out our scheduling items to the eighth grade, we want them to start selecting courses for next year, and it just, the last few years, it's been atrocious trying to get this done, where, I mean, we like to have these things done by St. Patrick's Day, and we usually just start, and so, I'm trying to expedite the process, if we can get that approved, with the exception of those that are gonna require additional funding, that'll help me get the ball rolling, just for scheduling purposes. The handbook will have to wait until the, the language is in.
All right. All right, members have had that information, do you have any additional questions for Mr. Bayshant? If not, the chair would entertain, Mr. Cludier?
Just through you to Mr. Bayshant, so the ones that require additional funding?
Yes.
How are you gonna implement those? Let's, let's just be positive and say they get funded, how will you implement that at a later date, because that date is gonna be significantly later?
Correct, we're gonna create the courses, but they're, and, and the kids can choose them, but they will not be activated, so it'll go on a wish list, so should we run the scheduling process at a later time, and we can click them on, you know, you guys approve them, I just gotta hit a, I don't have to go in and type them all up and, and all that, it's just a matter of...
All right.
Having them on the back burner, ready to go, if, if we get the approval, these kids can take robotics, they can take renewable energy sources, stuff like that.
Mr. Nagus?
And just to follow up, when's that, the funding gonna come forward, before the renewed school year, or, or what?
Well, once the school budget is passed, whatever that number is, if, if that money is included in that budget, then we're, then we're good to go, so it's gonna, it's gonna be based on the final school budget that's adopted.
That's my question, thank you. Any other questions? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve?
So, moved.
Motion by Mr. Cludier, seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Nagus, any further discussion? Are those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Close, so voted. Thank you, Mr. Nagus.
Thank you very much.
Next item, under new business, F-16 Budget Timeline, either had in your package or at your seat tonight, a budget timeline that's been put together by the superintendent and the comptroller and myself, to move the budget process forward, and to meet the deadlines that, that we're setting our goals to meet. Saturday, the 24th, this coming Saturday, the budget subcommittee is going to be meeting with the comptroller, as well as with Julie Suppanat, the high school principal, the superintendent, and we are gonna start that process. Then, on Tuesday, January 27th, the budget subcommittee is gonna meet again at 3:30 in the high school library, Saturday will be in the high school library as well, these are posted, they are open to the public, so anyone from the public is free to attend. And then, on Monday, February 2nd, we will start with the principals coming in. On, on Monday, we're gonna have Lake Street School, East Brookfield, and Wyre Village, and they will come in and make their presentations to the board. On Tuesday, February 3rd, Knox Trail and David Proudie will be in, that's gonna start at 6:30, we have an executive session prior to that, and then they'll make their presentations. On Wednesday, SPED will be coming in, curriculum in Title I will be done by Dr. Zaleski, and then on Thursday, we'll have Steve Torrey with technology, food services with Robin Sunquist, and transportation custodial by the comptroller. So, that's the schedule, the timeframe that we're working on. As a matter of information for the public, Cable Access has confirmed that they will only be able to cover February 2nd and February 3rd, they will not be able to cover February 4th and February 5th, so, anyone from the public that's interested in following the budget process, you will not be able to get that on cable, if you're interested in those departments, you'll have to attend the, the public hearing in order to be informed as to what's going on. Cable Access does a great job, they assist us with just about everything that we need, this is just a little bit over the top with all of the demands that we have and other programs that they're, they have responsibilities to do, and they're doing the best to fit us into this schedule, so we understand the problem, and we thank them for their, for their help with everything. Does anybody have any questions? Any board members have any questions in regards to that schedule? I, I know it, it's four nights in a row, it's one week, but I think we really need to get the ball rolling here, so that we, we can meet the timelines that we wanna, we wanna meet, and we can iron out any bugs that, that come up throughout the budget process. Is everybody good with that? No questions? All right, next personnel information, I don't believe there was any, was there anything in the packet for personnel updates? There was, so you have that in your packet, any questions on that? No? School newsletters were in your packet, any questions on those? Next item, hearing for visitors, anyone want to be heard? Seeing none. School committee comments and future agenda topics, the training has been confirmed with Glenn Kucha, for those school committee members that are retaking the school committee training, they will be there along with the superintendent, Dr. Crowe, that is this Thursday at 5 o'clock in the superintendent's office. If anyone else has changed their mind or would like to attend, feel free to do so. I saw an article in the paper several days ago that I thought may be something for the committee to entertain, or to ask the superintendent, to ask the high school principal to entertain, it was brought up in another community, for the community service that the students have to do, would there be a possibility, probably too late for this year, but in the future for senior citizens that are not capable of going out to shovel their walk or clean the area in front of their house, could we put a system together where those residents could call the high school, you know, there'll be some qualification for it, you know, age-wise, what have you, disability-wise, and could we utilize student services to go out and do something like that? Mr. Bayshant?
Yeah, as long as that's not an issue, that's, that's nothing, there's no legal issue regarding any of that, I'm all for it.
Okay.
The district I live in watches that they... The district I live in watches that they have a crew, you know, the green crew, whatever, and they rake leaves, they shovel snow, they, they do something similar, and I'd like to incorporate that here as well.
I'm sure it's something we'll have to vet with our insurance people, with attorneys to make sure liability and stuff, but you'd be on board.
And we don't want to miss an AP class to...
Okay.
Shovel a driveway.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members? Mr. Cludier.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to announce tonight that the district has reached agreement with Unit C. Unit C and the district have agreed on a contract, and over the next few weeks, that contract will be going through, being vetted through the legal process before being signed. But I'm pleased to announce that this evening.
Thank you. And that was a great job done by Mr. Cludier and by the subcommittee that handled those negotiations. It was done in a very short time, and it, we had two sides that were together and willing to work and cooperate with each other, and the results of it certainly panned out. Anyone else have any comments, suggestions, any items that you want on any future agendas? Tonight, unfortunately, Angela couldn't be with us, she's coming back from Texas, and she wasn't able to make it back in time, and Chris King was called out at work and was unable to attend tonight, so, but I expect those folks to be with us at the next meeting. All right, if there's no other issues and stuff, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Nodquist.
Motion by Mr. Nodquist.
Seconded.
By Mr. Cludier. All those in favor, aye? All so voted. Thank you.